To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Paulie. Trustee Lappin.
Excuse absence.
Clerk Colavich here, Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Crow.
Excused absence.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Present. Moving forward to the adoption of the agenda, are there any other corrections, substitutions to the agenda as presented? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So.
We have a motion and do we have support as well?
So who made the motion?
You did.
Okay, well, I don't know.
I don't know.
I'll put treasurer and supported by trustee Ryan.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. This is the first opportunity for public comment, public comment in the first issuance is to budget or to the agenda items. I know that you, this will be a quick one, so your matter, you can actually address on the second public comment unless it's on the agenda. Okay, so this will be a quick meeting. That being said, all those in favor of adoption of the agenda signify.
We are.
Thank you. Public comment and then payment of the bills, do we have a motion to make payment of the bills? I'll make that motion. Their support.
Also, it's been moved and supported.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Clerk Colavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Poli.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to the minutes of June 27th, 2022, a regularly scheduled meeting, are there any corrections or changes to the minutes as presented?
Move to accept.
We have a motion on the table to move to accept the minutes as presented, is there support? I'll support it. Moved and supported for their discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes of June 27th, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Moving forward into correspondence, we have one piece of correspondence from FERC in terms of the spillway concrete coring plan. I'll entertain a motion to receive and file the correspondence as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
The motion and support to receive and file the correspondence as presented for their discussion.
Do I understand when you go to that letter, that's involved in the Ninth Street, is that right?
So Ninth, Seventh and Fourth.
Oh.
For all part.
Oh, I misread that.
Yeah, they all have all the same engineering and architectural failure points. So there's a reason that I continuously put how bad our dams are in our community into our into our correspondence, but yes, they're all in pretty dire need. Any other discussion over the correspondence? Seeing none, all those in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Correspondence has been received. Moving forward into old business, this is a point of clarification to an existing motion that was already approved. Michelle, do you want to make it?
We already approved to make the payment to Graham Electric Motor to fix the generator. At the last meeting, we thought that maybe we had designated ARPA funds for that when I went and reviewed the minutes. We had not designated ARPA funds or a specific GL, so we brought it back into our old business, so we could specify how we wanted to pay for that. We did in the last meeting approve the generator switch to be paid out of our funds.
It would be our recommendation to actually clarify the previous motion and amend it to state that said expenditure would be with the use of ARPA funds.
Which would mean it wouldn't come out of that line item in the budget. And that was nine thirty-one with it.
Nine thirty-one.
Nine thirty-one. Buildings and grounds maintenance, I believe.
Well, there it is. Yeah. We've got what, something like ten thousand in there? I'm reading that right? I'm going across thirty thousand in there. That's the budget for this issue.
That.
Bring mine with me.
I just wondered, I mean, we've pretty much used. And that was prior to my question. We've already used or committed, I think, funds that aren't on Michelle's list for the water tower of thirty-two, is that correct?
We have not made a motion to that, these are only the items that the board has voted on.
My memory was that we kind of had a consensus on that, if not a motion. And that's three hundred and some thousand, I think we were gonna have half of our money gone.
Be half of, that'd be one of our tranches of our minds, pretty much, roughly speaking.
So I guess if we've got a budgeted amount that line item that covers it, what's the advantage of something like this coming out of that budget? I mean, isn't this kind of?
Well, right now, we specified with, there's two parts, two components to this quote, one being all the materials, which is in the gram. And then the latter was John's Electric to implement the switch and install said equipment. We specified that expenditure for the project with ARPA monies. Through some clarification and digging in, we found out that we did not clarify the principal part of the project earmarked in the same allocation. So I'd just like to see this at least be concurrent, we can always amend our budget downstream. If we want to use the same GL for an expenditure, we can allocate ARPA monies to that expended out of that GL, but if, why create an extra step?
No, I assume we're doing a separate accounting for the ARPA money at this point, but I guess my point was, should we keep as much of those funds available for bigger projects than this is, if we've got this kind of worked into the budget already, that was my question.
And if we do decide to pay Graham out of the GL, I would also like to see us change and pay John's Electric out of that.
What's the total then, would those be?
Well, John's Electric was three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and Graham was nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-three.
Roughly ten or thirteen thousand.
About thirteen thousand.
And we've got it in that line, do you anticipate any big expenditures out of that line item for the rest of the year?
We have no shortages of projects.
Well, we, I think five thousand is coming out for the new doors.
I think it's actually, isn't it six thousand?
Well, it's sitting on my desk.
Yeah.
Or fifty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's gonna come out of that line.
Right.
That we've already approved.
I just think to keep it consistent, wherever it comes out of for the generator should be the same.
I agree with it, that makes sense.
So either way, we'd be fine.
I just when the bills come in, I want to know where to pay them from.
Where to allocate.
Yeah.
I just, my thought is that line item, and then if we need to do something else later, we can do that.
Okay, so then you're looking at utilization of both, so then we'd need actually a corrective motion to the John's Electric.
Yeah, I would just make it into one motion that we would pay John's Electric rather than from ARPA funds from line item nine thirty-one. And you'll need the whole number probably, and.
Nine thirty-one is, okay, where you'd want to pay.
Yeah. One oh one, two, six, five, nine, thirty-one.
Repair building.
Yeah, that would be my motion. Of course, we have two trustees missing, so that's kind of tough, but.
So we have a motion on the table then to make payment for John's Electric and Graham Motor.
Yeah.
Both total invoices to be taken out of one oh one.
Two, six, five.
Two, six, five, nine, three, one, zero, zero, zero.
Maintenance and repair.
Maintenance and repair building.
I'll support that.
Okay. We have a motion and support.
The only other question or statement, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is what had to do with the shoot. Never mind, I'll think of it in a minute.
My question was, is we already were paying for a switch? Out of, was that coming out of ARPA funds?
It's where we had originally.
Corrected in this motion, it was a motion.
Oh, the switch was from John's Electric.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're only buying one thing from Graham.
No, it's a plethora of individual parts.
For the.
Yeah, it's all the ingredients to make a pie, they just need the chef to put it in the oven, and that's what John's Electric.
Yeah.
There's my cooking analogy for the day.
Yeah, I was thinking, I don't know, I thought the switch was coming.
So further discussion in regards to the new motion to make allocation out of.
Oh, I was the question, time on ARPA, how long do we have? I think we have.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, so we.
We have ample time to really dot eyes and cross these with the utilization of our total. Seeing no other discussion, roll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Poli.
Yes.
Clerk Colavich, yes, Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward, new item of business is some budget adjustments. A lot of them are just corrections that were just kind of trickled through from the chart of account conversion.
It added a second John Hancock, so we want to get the money we budgeted, got put in to the inactive GL, so now this is just putting it in the active GL and all the John Hancock stuff. The bottom one that says salary payable for challenger.
Yeah.
That.
Said above.
We have estimated revenues at ten thousand, he gets paid eighty percent of the revenues, and for some reason, we only budgeted a thousand, but it should have been eight thousand. So that's just to correct that. Public safety.
We had the transfer, we chief gave us two GLs to put some additional funds into emergency nine-one-one gas, and then we also had to make a change to copies, correct?
Yes.
And outside the corrections, those are really the only
Yeah.
true budget amendments or adjustments.
Yeah, because of the price of gas going from.
Yeah. So I've entertained a motion to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented. Some motion on the table to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented, is there support?
Also, it's been moved and supported, further discussion?
Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Poli.
Yes.
Clerk Colavich, yes, Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Next item of business is an invoice that Nathan Liddell brought forward to us after a conversation with in regards to our lift stations in DPW sites off campus for tree removal, which is desperately needed at all of our sites. This was the only, at this point in time, this North Wind Tree Service was the only company that had contacted Mr. Liddell back in regards to his request for quotes. It would be my position as it stands currently to move forward with the critical condition pine at Piper Tower. We can also test to see how this company is, and at the meantime, still actually maybe secure a couple other quotes.
I'm gonna ask a Steve Lappin question, I didn't, I finally found that, I didn't know who was submitting this bill, and I see it down here and find, print it.
Yeah.
Sold by. Should we not make sure they're fully insured, that the words, this is maybe from a lawyer speaking, I don't know, insurance guy for sure would jump on this. Widowmaker. The second line. That immediately brings to mind is he fully insured for.
That's what they're called though, is widowmakers, and they're dangerous trees.
Yeah.
So I would put widowmaker in there too.
I was thinking of a certain artery to my ear, but anyway. But.
Yeah, no, that would be inherent, that they would have to meet the standards of our insurance, and they do.
Okay.
So.
We would get a certificate from them.
Yeah, before we move forward, that way we can, we can test the water, we don't know what, I haven't gotten a comprehensive quote, I know I've historically had a couple other quotes from other contractors, so I don't know where the reality stands in nowadays monies in terms of tree removal. I know it's not cheap, but out of this entire list, right now, the most critical piece that does need to be cut would be the pine tree at Piper Tower. So it'd be my recommendation to move forward solely at this point in time utilizing North Wind Tree Service to remove the tree concern at Piper Road Water Tower. And that would, yes, this one.
I was just going to mention that because of the unit project that number two, because that potentially could go into an early fall paint project, it may be beneficial to include any moves at that site also, simply for the fact that we don't hold up painting projects, we're really getting those bids on the twenty-seventh of this month, and they may want to start immediately after Labor Day, so I think we have a few weeks, but that would be up to the board, if they want to authorize that part of it as well.
Yeah, we do have time, I mean, we'd have to put this right back on the agenda on the twenty-fifth. Yes, Laura.
I mean, I guess because of the widowmaker situation, and I mean, I would feel comfortable just having it all done at one time and.
And I'm fine with that, I just, we didn't get anything back, so I was just saying, if we could kill two birds with one stone, get to wet our beak a little bit, if you will, with this service. And if we don't, then we still have the option, but if you would like to make that into motion, I did have a recommendation to a GL that has enough money to satisfy the entire, I think it's right actually, almost dollar to dollar, we may actually need to do in addition to a budget adjustment for the GL that I would utilize, but that would be five nine two, five three seven, nine three two, zero, zero, zero. Nine three two is grounds maintenance and grounds and building maintenance.
The other question on insurance maybe is, I think about this, is what's their cutter's liability if they do damage to our cower or our fixtures around or whatever it might be? Say again? Okay, so we would ask for proof.
We should be pretty sound in regards to, you know.
Who's the owner of the business?
Do we know why we didn't get close from the others, I mean, there's a couple of well-known and substantial ones.
So I looked at the board, there is a need, obviously, we know that there's one tree in particular that has a greater potential for damage. All of it does need to be addressed, it's routine maintenance that has gone at least a decade on some sites unchecked. So I'm fine with moving forward in its entire capacity or in a limited stretch.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with North Wind Tree Service to provide the services listed in the amount of eight thousand dollars.
I'd support that, yeah.
Since you do have, and Russ, could you actually do me a favor and go to the tail end of that budget report and go to five nine two expenditure five three seven nine three two, which is grounds, I want to say there's seventy-nine hundred eighty-four dollars, so we may, if agreeable to this motion, let's clean, let's make sure that we have the eight thousand dollars in the GL.
Seven, what was the number?
Nine three two, it'd be the.
Oh, here it is, okay, grounds maintenance repair. We're showing.
Oh, seven thousand nine sixty-four eighty.
Nine sixty-four eighty.
Is that what you got left?
So I was off. Forty cents.
But we do have a bill to pay from two old parts, and that's about four hundred dollars.
We've already used some of that.
Right.
Mine's not.
That's what we budgeted.
So.
We've used two thousand thirty-five.
Let's do, if you could do, make a budget adjustment of, if you.
How much? Do you want to let?
That way we can just pull money and be done with it and add it to the.
I think I put a number on there.
Yep. Okay, so then. Okay. So then on top, well, we'll do it as a separate motion. So you already have the motion and support, or are we gonna add it right to your motion, Laura?
We can add it and be.
Okay, then it would be.
Yeah.
That way it'd be cleaner. It'd be my recommendation as part of your motion to include a budget adjustment to remove two thousand from five nine two five three seven seven two nine zero, zero, zero. So that'd be a reduction of two thousand dollars and putting that two thousand dollars back into five nine two, five three seven, nine three two, zero, zero, zero.
And the seven two nine was what?
Seven two nine is maintenance supplies and operating.
Okay.
And that way we'll have enough to get through the fiscal with our current contract with lawn maintenance and take care of this entire bill and its entirety. So are you, you're good with that?
Yes.
Any further discussion in regards to? Seeing none, roll call please.
Clerk Colavich, yes, Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Poli.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes, then please move forward, if you can get the copy of the insurance and submit that to the clerk's office and have him proceed at his earliest, Mr. Leo. Thank you very much. Moving forward, new item business number three, fire department resignation, I think that's fairly self-explanatory, we have Mr. Bolonowski is moving forward. Do we have to do motions to accept?
It was emailed to me.
Yeah, it was just, it was later this morning, I submitted, so it'll be in your inbox.
I think we do accept.
Do we?
Yeah.
Take. Move forward with a motion to accept James Bolonowski's letter of resignation.
I'll make the motion.
For. Motion and support to accept his letter of resignation for their discussion.
What would be the effect if we did?
I don't know, just wait, wait until the roll call, because I'm voting against it. Yeah, it's a good point. Seeing no other discussion. All those in favor of accepting James Bolonowski's letter of resignation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Moving forward, chief, if you'd like to take the podium, new business for intake valves.
Good morning, Chief Mark Hansen. We have some aging valves on our two pieces of equipment, there are two engines, they were never replaced when or purchased when the new engines were sought after. Currently, we're having issues with getting a draft on both engines because of the leaking valves on these steamers, steamers intakes, they're called several different things, so ball valves, if you will, but anyhow, what we're getting is we're getting a drafting issue and we're getting pump cavitation and that's the air coming into the pumps and putting undue stress onto the pumps, so I originally budgeted for four of these ball valves in our, in our current budget for this year, however, prices have gone up thirty percent since the time I prepared the budget. So we had a task force tip demonstration company come out. We put one of their valves on our truck, we were seeking after that valve anyhow, speaking with several different departments that have them, they're having great success with them valves. So we actually have one on loan from the demo on our truck, the guy says, no, no hurry, no rush, do your board meeting, do whatever. They're gonna give us a demo price on that particular valve that we have on the truck right now, and of course, the other one's gonna be brand new, so that'd be twenty-one, one seventy-five, one seventy-one, excuse me. But the demo valve would come in at seventeen hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. And it's my recommendation that we move through with the purchase of those to prevent any further situations from drafting and any possible damage that we could receive to our pumps down the road, to me, it's gonna be cheap insurance to protect our asset.
We have a recommendation of chief to move forward with the total project cost of three thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents to replace two ball intake valves for both engines, one and two, is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion?
So I noticed on that first, the demo quote, shipping is to be determined, but if we already have that, we won't be paying shipping.
That's, that's correct.
Do we have any idea what shipping would be on the other one?
I don't know, it goes by the weight, I'm thinking we're probably at thirty-five pounds possibly, so really don't know the answer to that, truthfully.
Jessica.
So I guess what I'm hearing, these valves are sucking air.
Right, so the current valves that are on the truck, and I'll just show you in exhibit A here, I don't know if you have that in your photo. This valve, what they believe is approximately thirty-five years old, thirty to thirty-five years old, which was never replaced when we purchased the truck, this is currently on the newest engine, we have a thirty-five-year-old valve that's leaking. I have videos of them just pouring water out of them, they're completely tightened up, something we've got to take care of, so we don't end up having pump damage and and it costs them thirty, forty thousand dollars for putting in a new replacement pump. To me, it's this good sense, this picture here, you can see with the current old valve, this is a picture looking down the truck, it sticks about seven inches outside the footprint of the truck, which could be hooked on a door, I mean, anything could possibly happen, so keeping that streamlined within the, within the footprint of the truck like this, valve will do.
You budgeted for four, where would the other two go?
I didn't even propose them, because I don't, I won't have the money, so.
I get that, but, but I mean, is there more than one valve on a truck?
Yes, there should be two on each truck. Right now, we're gonna try to make do with at least replacing the one valve on each truck, and then next year, we'll tackle it again for another two valves, however, we will be, will be afforded the higher prices by next year, you know how that all goes.
Is there a maintenance program for these kinds of valves, in other words, gasketings every so often or something, or whatever else?
There probably could be on these newer type valves, the older valves, this task force tip company bought out this Jaffrey company thirty years ago. They don't even make the parts for the thing anymore, is what he told me, so.
So I'm just curious, why has it, if, obviously, these probably have been leaking for quite some time, why are we just hearing about it now?
I wanted to replace them on day one when I got here.
No, I know, but I didn't know that we had leaking valves or.
Right, I'm not sure.
If it's, you know, if it's an issue, I'm just wondering like, and then I'm, and I know you weren't a part of this, but I'm just very disappointed that we have a brand-new fire engine that didn't come with everything that we needed on it at the time of the purchase.
As well as I am.
So which is the perfect segue to, if we're moving forward with an RFP for another piece of equipment, that that RFP spells out every single thing plus a spare set of shoelaces.
Right.
Whoever's riding shotgun.
That's exactly what I've.
We have, we have a motion and we have support to move forward with an expenditure of three thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents from GL two oh five, three, three, six, nine, seven, four, zero, zero, zero. Any further discussion?
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Poli.
Yes.
Clerk Colavich, yes, Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward. Uh, moving forward, um, are there any questions uh, for any of the department reports?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Um.
Do we, I have a, on the clerk's report, I did have a question.
Am I?
Yes. Uh, absentee ballot, I, I, you sent out. Wait, few. Are those by request of voters?
Those are people who are on our permanent absent voter list. So if there's an election, we automatically send them an application.
Has that always been done that way? Or is it just a recent change?
The permanent list has been around since I've been here. It has grown a lot because of COVID.
And that would be at the request of the individuals.
They have to request it. And we've had people request to go off of it too.
How do we verify that the people are still residents or alive? Or how do we do that before we mail them? Well, before you mail anything.
First, we mail the application from our list and then they assign it and return it to us and verify the signature.
So first you're sending an application.
Correct. Nobody can get a ballot, whether it's in person or absentee, until we have a signed application.
So that's how you verify.
And they verify, they verify signatures. I can attest to.
We, we have gotten, people have moved, so those are returned to us because election mail is not forwarded.
Any other questions for any department has?
Oh, are we due at liberty or is it public knowledge yet? Though you had the comment about a new park proposed in the county.
It is not at that point in time.
Okay.
That will be forthcoming. Um, part of that will be uh, something that I'll probably be bringing forward to the board. Uh, it's a, a collaboration and partnership with Huron Pines, which is a Lake Huron Forever pledge, which has now some shoestrings attached to a, a lot of state and federal money uh, for water clarity and recreational opportunity. So I, I'm, I'm in hopes that uh.
When you speak English, I'll ask you.
I'll try and I forget to speak English. Um, any other conversation or discussions about any of the, the department reports? Seeing none, uh, this is the second opportunity, sir. If you'd like to state your name for the record, uh, we don't need your, your physical address by open meetings as standards anymore.
My name is uh, Jerry Keshner, residing through six twenty one work road. I came to this meeting here last month asking if anybody had any help for me to try to figure out how I can get the county road commission or anybody to dig out my ditch. Um, I got property, it's getting flooded. I didn't fill out an application to obtain a permit and that got denied yesterday. I received that amount. I can't, the, the gentleman I talked to, he said he'd never, he couldn't remember last time they denied a permit. They, they're not giving me a permit. They're not giving anybody else permit. They're not going to dig out the ditch and they're not going to give me back my easement. And they state that there's two laws that says that they can do what they're doing, federal laws. I asked them to have, show me a copy of that and they told me that they didn't have time to do that. But that's their explanation for, I asked, deny, delay, defend. So I asked this board again, does anybody have any ideas what I, where I can go from here? I'm at, I'm at which ends here and I'll try and figure out how, how to try and maintain.
And this is atypical. Typically, this is just public comment. Your comments are, are heard by the board. There's usually never an interaction. Um, but you've made the comments at your previous uh, opportunity of public comment that under uh, the Right to Farm Act, you have abilities that are afforded to you as an agricultural producer. Maybe if that's, if you're not getting any other traction because therein uh, we are the charter township of Volcano Road Commission or ditching. Hopefully, if we're, we're successful uh, downstream, we'll have an economic driver to do more projects uh, for ditching and roads. Um, but you've already talked to the principal organization that is directly associated with your quandary.
I've gotten three commission meetings.
Uh, to me, I looked towards uh, trustee Reinhardt with his uh, legal background. You're, you've explored all of your valuable prudent options. Uh, if you have options as an agricultural producer, then those are your options to use.
What do you, what is basically is being said here is that uh, you know, you probably don't have any ability to get just your ditch fixed. It's probably going to be a system wide issue longer, you know, to a, to a watershed some. But uh, uh, the, uh, the, you know, your ditch, I'm sure it'll help you. It might just draw more water from other places into the lower area.
I got.
But, but the point is that, that I think you're at a point where you may have to seek private assistance, talking about legal assistance.
But they can't get, they can't be sued. The county road commission can't be sued.
Uh, that's, that's a general statement, not necessarily a specific statement. Uh, there is reasons, uh, there's also, uh, they can be sued for uh, what they call mandamus, for example, to make them do something, uh, things like that. So, uh, you know, I, you know, you might have to go to somebody that is a legal specialist in the area, but.
Yeah, I've gone to all the places that would help senior citizens and they denied the case because they said that they don't want to get tied up in like ideation. Then they, they figured that's.
It's, it's, it would be somewhat specific and complex litigation. It'd probably be on your dime initially.
Well, and, and the trustee Reinhardt's point is uh, even with our limited capacity with an economic driver to take care of ditching and road projects, et cetera. It, from our standpoint and knowing a little bit about hydrology, it makes absolutely zero sense to use tax dollars to clean out your ditch when all we're beginning to be doing is systematically creating the issues all for the remaining property owners, all the way till Cranberry Creek would probably be the first natural easement for dispersment. So.
With that being said, though, that brings me back to the piece of paper, which I didn't have it in my folder today. You people all signed on with the, you know, county road commission to clean out Misery Bay Road. Now that road was cleaned out, it says on, on the paperwork, four point four tenths, it's almost seven tenths of a mile. Somebody got nine hundred feet free. And if I'm paying taxes and that mine, my nine, that nine hundred feet got, somebody got it free. That's all I can say. It, it's almost seven tenths of a mile.
Yeah, and you're, but you're also comparing an apple to an orange. Um, the, the, the mechanism in the process is somewhat similar. But in regards to the Misery Bay Road pride, project, that had been an ongoing project that the partnership between the road commission and this board has had with various other projects to eliminate the water pooling in that area.
Well, I asked them to explain that to me and, and their best knowledge was um, it was a rolling away the road. And I said, you understand it's the shoreside, not the lakeside. And I said, that's all clay and shell. You know, I mean, it's just.
We, we've definitely heard your public comment and if there's, if there's a mechanism that we can apply some pressure, but it seems like you still have some cards left in your deck. And if you have that afforded you under the Right to Farm Act, sir, then that is your property and that is your right to, to have an agricultural product on that land.
My nightmare is if they turn that in and they, that farm that's labeled as wetland, it's useless to me. Totally useless. You know, so I appreciate, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Uh, is there any public comment online? If so, please use the bottom task bar to raise your hand or to send us a message so that we can identify you. Again, this is this second opportunity for the last public comment of today's board meeting. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, seeing no other comment in person. Uh, is there any other discussion for the, the good of the orchard? Yes, Jessica.
I'd just like to say that it was a, this was sent out of the Texas. I think it was a nice uh, form that we could maybe consider looking at doing twice a year, some just good information or basic that I think our citizens could use. I think it was good.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. He's making.
Yeah, that's probably.
We have, we have a motion and support, I did believe.
I'll accept your motion, I'll support.
It just came out so quick.
I have self spoken, none of you heard me.
I was frazzled. So we have a motion and support on the table. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjournment? Oh, oh, yeah, we're, let's just, we'll be right up. Uh, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose the same. Meeting adjourned at eleven forty.